Good morning, all. Today is November 5th. The Board of County Commissioners will convene. We'll have a pledge allegiance by Pastor Belkang.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please pray with me. Now, holy and almighty God, you have given us this good land as our heritage. It's our prayer that you make us always remember your generosity and constantly do your well. Bless our land with honest industry, sound learning, and an honorable way of life, and save us from violence and strife and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. It's our prayer that you make us who come from many nations with many different languages a united people. As today is National Election Day, we also wish to pray for all the candidates, local, statewide, and national, that they will incur your favor as they seek to serve your people in the various political offices. May peace and goodwill prevail among all people as we go through this important democratic exercise, cherishing the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans. We also thank you and pray for our government and our land. Indeed, we are grateful for a land that is free and for a government that, despite its faults and failures, is one of the best in the entire world. We pray for the strength of our nation and for its ability to defend itself against those who want to destroy our way of life. We are grateful for those who have made the supreme sacrifice on our behalf, and for those who at this moment are prepared even now to defend their country. We especially pray for our state officials and today our county commissioners, and also all the employees and our public servants, staff, especially Commissioner Sandelli, as she retired from faithful service in these last five years, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, in helping us live in a community that is safe, pleasant, and just. May your presence be felt in a powerful way as we endeavor to seek your way and guidance. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll start off with ceremonial presentations. First one is Commissioner Pendegras.
Come on, thank you, Chairman. If I could have the staff and animal services come forward. We have a guest in the room this morning, and hopefully some of our tenure employees here might find somebody to take home with them today or visit our services. Pablo's got a friend he's bringing forward.
She's gonna visit everybody on the way.
Karen, you wanna tell us about who we got there and what she's looking for?
This is Chica. She is six years old, and it is National Adopt a Senior Pet Month, so she fits in quite well, and she will shake, so please ask her to shake on her way back. She's been with us three times, so her only constant in her life has been the shelter staff, and we love her, we love having her, but we would love for her to have a permanent home, and highly recommend her, she's a great dog. Adoptions right now are $30 during the month of November. We do have our vaccine clinic Thursday at east of Lee High Regional Library this Thursday. Next Thursday is our check, the CHIP clinic at Gulf Coast Town Center Outreach Center with Lee County Sheriff's Office. And then we have our pet fest at the end of the month on the 23rd at our place, so please stop on out, and if you want your pet photo taken with Santa, please schedule that. We have that at our pet fest as well. And please, someone adopt Chica, give her her forever home. We highly recommend her, she's a great dog.
How old is she?
Six years old. She is actually considered a senior.
And she's been with us three times, right?
She's been with us three times.
She's very thick and healthy, so thank you to all your staff and volunteers.
She's a great dog.
It's kinda, it's great to see that there is actually living dogs come out of the shelter, because you listen to some, you know, people out there, they think everything doesn't leave there, but this is a perfect example. She's been there three different times, she's looking for a good home now, and hopefully a family for the holidays will adopt her and some other animals. So, thank you and all your staff and the volunteers for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come on, Chica, you're the best.
Strong.
Thank you, Chairman.
The next proclamation will be National Injury Prevention Day by Commissioner Hammond.
Thanks, Chairman, very much. I'd like to call out folks from Lee Health, Tracy Thornton, and anybody who came with you today for National Injury Prevention Day. If you guys will just come to the podium, we will read the proclamation into the record, and then we'll take a picture, and we'll ask somebody to say a few words. Tracy, it's great to see you here, by the way. I just, before we read this, you may notice if you come to the Lee County Courthouse at night, it is lit up green for National Injury Prevention Month, and so that is our part of celebrating that. It was Tracy's wonderful idea, and we were so glad to be able to make it happen, so. All right, we will read the proclamation into the record. Whereas National Injury Prevention Day will be observed on November 18th, 2024, the annual designation raises awareness about the significance of injury and advocates for injury awareness and prevention in southwest Florida. Whereas southwest Florida is vested in preventing injuries and violence as they are the leading causes of death and disabilities for people from ages one to 44 years old. Whereas southwest Florida is working to establish a safe and injury-free environment in and around southwest Florida as trauma injuries recently contributed to over-hospital visits in Lee County alone from 2023 through the current year as of March of 2024. Whereas hospitals, state agencies, and community organizations are committed to the crucial role of reducing injuries, rather, and deaths by promoting safe practices, and whereas National Injury Prevention Day raises awareness to promote efforts to prevent injuries among all age groups, Lee Health Trauma Services and Galisano Children's Hospital, in collaboration with law enforcement agencies, local fire departments, emergency medical services, and many other area agencies and businesses throughout Lee County and beyond, work to protect and help prevent all residents and visitors from injuries. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, does hereby proclaim that November 18th is National Injury Prevention Day, and we call upon all residents of Lee County to join us in this observation. It's duly executed this 5th day of November by our Chairman Mike Greenwell. Congratulations, happy National Injury Prevention Day.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Love that tie, very much.
Good to see you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Three, two, one. Thank you. Thank you.
It'll be myself and Dr. Alfaro speaking. So first, I just wanna say thank you to the Commissioners for recognizing November 18th as National Injury Prevention Day. Trauma alerts and patients are obviously a big part of our lives. We also want to thank our esteemed partners, as you said, Fire Law Enforcement EMS, they help us get the awareness out so that we can help, hopefully, eventually, decrease these numbers, because year over year, we're getting more and more, so we wanna just thank you for that. We operate as the one and only Level Two Trauma Center in five counties, Lee, Glades, Charlotte, Hendry.
Collier.
Collier. I always want to think about it. And so that, you know, we can treat those that are in our district area, so we just really appreciate you recognizing this day for us. And then I'll introduce Dr. Alfaro.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, everybody that goes into healthcare goes in there, in that field because we wanna help, we wanna make things better. A good day is when we do an operation that's successful and we return a family member back to their job, back to their loved ones. Unfortunately, that's not what we do all the time. I think the hardest, and the days that we don't forget ever are the ones when you have to tell a parent that their child is dead, when you have to tell a mother that their son is dead, and it's something that you never forget, and it won't go away. And it doesn't take just the officers and, you know, EMS and everybody, it takes every single one of us, because we all drive cars, we all have those sets of equipment that we ride, or we drive, or, you know, the phone that distracts us. We are all responsible, and I think we all play a role in the community, to protect each other, and so that when those patients come to us, we can use the tools we have, and we can bring them back to the best condition we can, but unfortunately, all too often, it is too late, and I think the most heartbreaking ones are the little ones that, you know, don't have a choice and are just innocently sitting in a car, and a drunk driver comes from the back and hits them and kills them. So, I just wanna thank everybody for giving us this opportunity, and just wanted you to hear that from a trauma surgeon's standpoint, from those rough days that we have that, trust me, we don't forget, so, thank you.
Thank you. God bless you all, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Commissioner. Next is the Length of Service. If I could ask the Commissioners to come on down the front and turn over the county map.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Ms. Pruitt to present.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Angela Pruitt, representing Human Resources, along with Lynn Harrell from Human Resources and your County Manager, Dave Harner. We're here this morning to present the Length of Service Awards for Quarter Three of 2024. These awards represent 925 years of service. Pretty exceptional. For those employees that are present, as I call your name, please step forward to receive your coin from the County Manager, and then come up to greet the Commissioners and the senior team. Please remain off to the side in order to take a group photo for each Length of Service group. As I start calling each group, five years is gonna come up first, I ask everyone in the group to congregate in the back and be ready for when your name is called. So again, we're gonna start with those with five years of service. First up, Vanessa Aduamanafu. Jose Alberti Villasante. We're gonna make a big round of applause for our five years of service. And we're gonna take a group photo, like, at the end, right, at the end. I remember now, yes. Ten years of service. I keep wanting to take one after each group. Big round of applause for ten years of service. Next up is 15 years of service, Allison Hall. Big round of applause for 20 years of service. 25 years of service, Cheryl Carbon. Big round of applause for 25 years of service. 30 years of service, Mark Danagri. And an extra clap for Mark at 30 years of service. And now, for 35 years of service. First up, Susan Ambergy. Let's congratulate these employees one more time, please. And now, we're gonna take a group photo. You're gonna look up, please, up.
I have the privilege of reading the next proclamation, but I'm gonna ask any elected officials to come on up here to the podium. Any elected officials that wanna come up for Commissioner Sandelli, please come up to the podium. Anyone? Several you've indicated would like to say something, but I'm gonna read the proclamation first, I'll give you an opportunity to say something thereafter. My honor to do this, Mr. Sandelli. Whereas Ray Sandelli is retiring from county government after five years of service as County Commissioner in District Three, and whereas Ray Sandelli was appointed by Governor DeSantis to Lee County Board of County Commissioners in 2019, and whereas he successfully ran for and elected to a full term in 2020 where he serves the county. Its residents, its businesses, and underwritten integrity, and whereas Ray Sandelli was involved in various charitable and civic organizations, served in many capacities over the years, including past president of Rotary, Habitat for Humanity, liaison to the Horizon Council, the Military Academy Selection Committee, just to name a few. And whereas during the time of Board of County Commissioners, Ray and his fellow Commissioners, along with County Manager and County Attorney, cared for and guided through COVID-19, Hurricane Ian, Helene, and Milton. And whereas Lee County acknowledges the many forward advancements enjoyed by the county during the tenure of Ray Sandelli, and wishes to acknowledge the past successes and accomplishments of Ray Sandelli. Now therefore, it's been resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, to hereby express the sincere appreciation and gratitude for Ray Sandelli's dedication, commitment to the community. We wish him continued health, happiness, and success in the years to come, and gratefully recognize his years of service to the residents of Lee County. It's signed by our Chairman, Mike Greenwell, for 5th November. Congratulations, Ray.
Very nice. I'll let any public official that wants to say anything, feel free to do so in any order. I'm gonna leave you with the three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board. For the record, Jenna Person's Malika, proud to be your state representative for House District 78, but even more proud to be a friend of Commissioner Ray Sandelli. Commissioner Sandelli, you've had an incredible five years with esteemed service and numerous accomplishments, but that's just one chapter of a story that has been written over many years and is yet to end. It's been a true honor to get to know you, to call you a friend, to call you a mentor, to hear your stories, and it will be a great honor to see everything that you will still yet accomplish, not only in the next two weeks while you still have work to do, but in the next many years. I'll never forget our long drive to Boca Grande early on after you were appointed, and hearing the incredible stories that you bring in your experience that you brought to that seat. When you were appointed, you hit the ground running, and I don't think the governor could have made a better appointment than when he chose you for that seat. Thank you, Commissioner Sandelli. Thank you for your work for our community, your work for our county, and your work for our state.
Kevin Carnes, Clerk and Comptroller to the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Sandelli, I was just telling Matt, five years has went by like that, but it probably also feels like a lifetime as well. I want to thank you for your words of encouragement, wisdom, and perspective of working with you the last several years, in my position the last three years. You've taught me a lot, and I'm very thankful to your service and what you've done to Lee County. I know your district got hit hard in the storm, as everybody did, but you are a true leader to this community, and we will miss you greatly. I wish you the best in your retirement.
Matt Caldwell, Lee County Property Praiser. Commissioner Sandelli, thank you very much for being willing to step into this position in what was a difficult time with your predecessors passing, and we saw someone in you that was willing to dive into the role. As you know, you can tell from my time in service, I appreciate and value people that take their job seriously, and that's all I ever saw from you when you first got appointed and then elected, with your yellow notepad, ready to figure out what the issues were and get to work on them. And no doubt, you were eager to work and take on this challenge, and we appreciate you for having done that, so thank you for your service.
Forgive me, I've got prepared remarks, I wanna use the full three minutes to praise Ray here this morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Royne, Commissioners Hammond, Commissioner Pendegras, and the reason for my attendance this morning, Commissioner Sandelli. Good morning as well to the members of the Lee County staff. My name is Jim Adderhold, and I am privileged to serve as the Vice Mayor of Fort Myers Beach. I'm joined by my fellow town council member, John King, who's back here, and we are here this morning on behalf of Mayor Dan Allers and the people of Fort Myers Beach. I know Dan and Ray are close, and the mayor was sad that he couldn't be here this morning due to a previously scheduled medical procedure. I rise today to thank Commissioner Sandelli for his service to Lee County, but in particular for the kindness and attention he has demonstrated towards Fort Myers Beach. Ray always visits our island with a smiling face, a smile undergirded with a depth of intellect and experience. Ray filled the seat of Commissioner Larry Keiker, a former mayor of Fort Myers Beach, and never paused in continuing Larry's legacy of service to our island. With 30-some beach access points with parking, our island's beautiful seven-mile beach is open and accessible not only for our residents, but for all the folks in Lee County, the state of Florida, the United States, and the world. When I attempt to thank Ray today for all the projects he has helped us with, please know that I'm also thanking all the Lee County Commissioners currently sitting up on the dais, as well as your fine staff led by Dave Horner. Here we go. The renovation of Estero Boulevard and the new sidewalks. I literally walked the entire way from my condo to the groundbreaking a few years back on those beautiful new sidewalks. The big New Carlos Pass Bridge on the south end of the island, which is currently under construction, and it's beautiful. Our ongoing beach renourishment, huge project. The debris pickup after Hurricane Ian, CDBG help, the new pier, Estero Boulevard cleanup after Helene and Milton, just to name a few. I always see public services a calling. Ray, my friend, on behalf of the people of Fort Myers Beach, thank you for answering the call. God bless you, and God speed on your future endeavors. Thank you.
Good morning. And thank you for your very kind comments. You know, the opportunity, as many of you know, came somewhat unexpectedly, but I will always I know your district got hit hard in the storm, as everybody did, but you are a true leader to this community, and we will miss you greatly. I wish you the best in your retirement.
Matt Caldwell, Lee County Property Praiser. Commissioner Sandelli, thank you very much for being willing to step into this position in what was a difficult time with your predecessors passing. And we saw someone in you that was willing to dive into the role. As you know, you can tell from my time in service, I appreciate and value people that take their job seriously, and that's all I ever saw from you when you first got appointed and then elected, with your yellow notepad ready to figure out what the issues were and get to work on them. And no doubt, you were eager to work and take on this challenge, and we appreciate you for having done that. So, thank you for your service.
Forgive me, I've got prepared remarks, so I want to use the full three minutes to praise Ray here this morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Ruane, Commissioners Hammond, Commissioner Pendiggrass, and the reason for my attendance this morning, Commissioner Sandelli. Good morning as well to the members of the Lee County staff. My name is Jim Aderhold, and I am privileged to serve as the Vice Mayor of Fort Myers Beach. I'm joined by my fellow town council member, John King, who's back here, and we are here this morning on behalf of Mayor Dan Allers and the people of Fort Myers Beach. I know Dan and Ray are close, and the mayor was sad that he couldn't be here this morning due to a previously scheduled medical procedure. I rise today to thank Commissioner Sandelli for his service to Lee County, but in particular for the kindness and attention he has demonstrated towards Fort Myers Beach. Ray always visits our island with a smiling face, a smile undergirded with a depth of intellect and experience. Ray filled the seat of Commissioner Larry Keiker, a former mayor of Fort Myers Beach, and never paused in continuing Larry's legacy of service to our island. With thirty-some beach access points with parking, our island's beautiful seven-mile beach is open and accessible not only for our residents, but for all the folks in Lee County, the state of Florida, the United States, and the world. When I attempt to thank Ray today for all the projects he has helped us with, please know that I'm also thanking all the Lee County Commissioners currently sitting up on the dais, as well as your fine staff led by Dave Horner. Here we go. The renovation of Astero Boulevard and the new sidewalks. I literally walked the entire way from my condo to the groundbreaking a few years back on those beautiful new sidewalks. The big New Carlos Pass Bridge on the south end of the island, which is currently under construction, and it's beautiful. Our ongoing beach renourishment, huge project. The debris pickup after Hurricane Ian, CDBG help, the new pier, Astero Boulevard cleanup after Helene and Milton, just to name a few. I always see public services a calling. Ray, my friend, on behalf of the people of Fort Myers Beach, thank you for answering the call. God bless you, and God speed on your future endeavors. Thank you.
Good morning. And thank you for your very kind comments. You know, the opportunity, as many of you know, came somewhat unexpectedly, but I will always be thankful for the opportunity to sit in these chambers and to serve the people of Lee County. Most importantly for all of us, it's always about the people, many of whom you've seen here, you know, as today as part of the Lee County family and truly is a family. I want to thank you to Randy Mercer and Dane Eagle, who thought of me in 2019 after the unfortunate passing of Larry Keiker. And Larry, all I can say is I hope I made you proud. To my fellow commissioners, it has been a true privilege to serve with each of you. Charlotte Cody, you're all professionally and personally, I want to thank you, and that seems somewhat inadequate. Thank you seems inadequate for taking care of me for the past five-plus years. Your patience is incredible. You are absolutely the best. To my wife, Jan, who's here, a woman of great patience and support, you have taught me more than I could possibly share. My love for you has a limit, as we continue to explore the years ahead. Actually, it rained on our wedding day, the pastor said that's good luck, so it's raining today, so I hope this is good luck for all of us going forward. Our greatest gift together has been Rachel, Chris, and Jessica, one gator and two Seminoles. I can only hope that your lives are as full of purpose and love as we have been. Take the best of what Mom and I have taught you and forget the rest. It's been an honor to serve. Thank you.
Still got you for a while.
Thank you.
No problem. Looking at the recap agenda, there's no items I'm going to have to address right now, so I'll move on to the consent agenda.
We got the video.
Sorry? Oh, we have a video.
Yeah, the video, Ray.
Sorry. My bad. I thought we were doing that later.
They just started it.
Well, Ray, I want to say goodbye, but more importantly, it's been an honor to work with you. Remember when I met you with all the mayors? We were both running together, and really, really appreciate all your help, all your assistance, all your patience, and enjoy retirement.
Ray, thank you for your service the last five years. Your passion and commitment to the residents of Lee County and the Board of County Commissioners has been tremendous. You've been a great wingman, and thank you for the last five years. Now enjoy some private time and relaxation. Congratulations.
Commissioner Sandelli, Ray, I have been called a lot of things in the eleven years that I've been on the county commission, but you came up with the best nickname, Hollywood. I love it. Ray, I appreciate working with you. I am going to miss you so much. You are always quick to listen and slow to speak, and everything you did, you did it with a purpose. I appreciate what you did during your time on the Board of County Commissioners. We will miss you, but we know you won't be far, and so I will be your wingman any day, Commissioner Sandelli. Have a great time.
Well, Ray, it's been a great two years getting an opportunity to work with you. It's been an honor. You have a lot of knowledge. You've taught me a lot of things on how to handle yourself with the public as far as being a commissioner. I really appreciate all that. And also, I'd like you to know that, what a way to go out. You've got your Yankees in the World Series. Maybe by the time you actually retire, maybe you guys have won a World Series. So, I've had a lot of fun joking with you about the baseball between the Yankees and the Red Sox over the years, and good luck, brother. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the recap. There's nothing that we need to address right now, so we'll move forward, move on to the consent agenda. Commissioner Hammond, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pendiggrass?
No items.
Mr. Sandelli? And I don't have any. With that in mind...
I'll move the balance.
I'll second that. A motion to second any public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, back up to the dais. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Sorry, I asked for public comment. I didn't see any cards. I didn't see any hands. Come on up. Come on up. Marcia, I'd never deprive you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Good morning, Marcia Ellis, for the record. First of all, I would like to say thank you to Commissioner Sandelli, who has brought grace and dignity to these chambers. It's so appreciated, and you will be sorely missed, sir. So, I had requested to share a public comment on three items, and I'm going to do my best to try to recall them. It was the item for seventeen, I believe, which is the concerns for the homeless, which continue to be an issue for the public, especially with homelessness becoming more and more criminalized, with no trespass becoming a reality for the local homeless community. The lack of sheltering for the unhoused is a concern, and really elevating this to top priority, pulling it into more of a public sphere so that we can give proper attention in service of the unhoused, including many veterans. Second of all, is the issue on the item, item thirty-one, in regard to solid waste. There is a lot of mystery around solid waste. I would really like to be able to work with the department to better understand contracts and contract mapping, understand that this is for a Class III landfill, and those are for the items that don't typically produce leachate, like construction and demolition, yard waste, et cetera. However, there are concerns for the hazardous substances that have been leaching and are associated with construction and demolition debris and other types of items that are typically found in this class of landfill, as well as concern for the incinerator ash that has been going out to Hendry and Lee County, understanding what is in that ash, how the ash and the items are going to be managed together. So, there's still a lot of questions about this item, and it is a significant investment at over $10 million. And then the third item has to do with the locations of the affordable housing projects. I was able to pull up the...
We'll come back to that administrative agenda item. That's where your card was. I apologize. You can come talk on that item when we call it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. It's just multiple numbers on your card. It was in the wrong pile. Any other public comment that I missed? Please raise your hand. Come on up. On the consent agenda, correct?
Yeah, number seventeen.
Okay. Great.
Concerning seventeen, I was to the city meeting last night. I've actually been interviewed by Mr. Price with Fox News on the issues, and then I noticed that there's going to be, on the eighteenth of November, an ordinance about homeless sleeping anywhere. Now, the thing is, we need a place for people to go. Where are they going to go? That's been the issue for a long time. This continuum of care budget and the eighty-nine million that was allotted, nothing was set aside for emergency places to go. Now, I understand the letter that I submitted from the psychologist. He texted me that he talked to somebody with Human Services about another shelter. I don't know. He hasn't got back to me. But we need to look out for everybody. You've got people with severe mental health issues. You've got addiction. You've got people robbing people. We need to get people off the street. You've got a lot of elderly now that are older than me, you know? I'm a senior citizen myself, so it's getting something that's affordable, and what they're paying goes into a fund to build more. I mean, the efficiencies, there's families with children that have asked me about this kind of stuff, and I said, it's in the process. They're building, but, you know, it takes time. But where are they going to be till then? That's the question. And that's a very human need. So, any consideration of that? Like I said, I'm willing to get in the ring with Leon Smith, somebody to whatever to fundraise. I went to a fundraiser for the clinic. We need to work together as a community for all the people, and I thank you for your time. I've got to go vogue, and I've got to help in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments that I missed? All right, I'll close public comment now. Bring it back up to the dais. We have a motion by Commissioner Pendiggrass, a second by Commissioner Ruane. Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to administrative agenda. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to approve conservation twenty-twenty purchase in East Fort Myers, and I'd like to ask Ms. Britton to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marla Britton with the Department of County Lands. This item approves the purchase of 12.12 acres of property on Bigelow Road along the southern banks of the Kalusahatchee River in the Fort Myers Shores Olga area. The purchase price is $1,550,000 and is below the two appraisals. There's also anticipated closing costs of $20,000. Finally, the Class Act Committee recommended purchase of this property unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Any thoughts?
Chairman, I'll move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hammond, seconded by Commissioner Sandelli. Any public comment? Any public comment? I don't see any. I'll close public comment, and back up to the dais. Any other discussion?
Just want to say this is another great addition to our twenty-twenty inventory we already have now. It's obviously going to help reduce the flowways of water into the river along the banks there, so I was happy to approve this.
No, anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Next item, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to adopt a resolution and approve an interlocal property sale agreement with the village of Astero. I'd like to ask Ms. Britton to present the item.
Good morning again, Commissioners. For the record, Marla Britton with the Department of County Lands. This item requests the adoption of a resolution and approval of an interlocal agreement to enter into a property sale with the village of Astero for the southerly twenty-five acres of the park in Astero, the Astero Park, leaving fifty acres to the north on the north end. Included in the purchase will be two buildings, a concession stand and maintenance building. The village owns the land adjacent to this area to the east and plans to construct a sports facility. As part of the agreement, the village will pay the county $700,000 for the land. The village will also pay to relocate the maintenance building to the north on the county's remaining property. The village is obligated to maintain the recreational fields at their cost moving forward. They are also obligated to continue providing use of the fields to the groups that are listed in the agreement, which is the groups that are currently utilizing the fields. And finally, the property is restricted to use for a sports facility for no other purpose. If that use is ever discontinued, the county has the rights to purchase the property back for the $700,000 investment in the future.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may. In addition to that, Marla mentioned the clause regarding the youth. Our goal here is to ensure that the youth, there's no interruption in service and nothing changes for them. This also allows the Astero, the village of Astero and the school district to work collectively on a campus, a large campus for youth sports. And this will not affect the youth league. It'll be a benefit to the community, and we felt that this would be a positive move moving forward.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Just a comment.
Sure.
When I saw this the first time, we started discussing it, it reminded me of the twenty-twenty program, is we start aggregating land, which allows you to do more things. And so I think the master plan here, in this case in Astero, to bring people together to form a larger parcel that people can enjoy, makes a lot of sense, and so we look forward to doing this thing together. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your public comment?
Want to hear a public comment first?
Sure. Any public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
District Commissioner would like to...
I'll move the item.
A motion on the floor. I'll second it. Motion to second on the floor. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to approve committee recommendations for CDBGR multifamily housing projects, and I'd like to ask Ms. Sutton to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you will recall, $150 million in CDBGR funding was made available through a competitive notice of funding availability process earlier this year. Those funds were intended to support the development of or new construction of affordable multifamily housing. In September, the board awarded just over $39 million to three projects. Those are depicted on green, in green on your map. The CDBGR Affordable Housing Evaluation Committee met for a second time on October 28th. During that meeting, the committee heard presentations from all remaining eligible applicants and considered factors such as mix of housing type, number of awards per developer, geographic distribution, project readiness, and of course, the technical review scores for each application. The committee voted to rank approximately $170 million in projects. Those are displayed on the next slide. Each of these projects will go, if selected today, will undergo a detailed underwriting process. If all requirements are fulfilled, then recommendations will be brought back to the board. The original NOFA, as you might recall, was 150 million. The three projects that were awarded for the 39 million leaves a balance of about 110 million. The committee did choose to rank some additional projects in case some did not pass that underwriting process, but of course, the board has the opportunity to recommend that all projects be awarded if they can fulfill that underwriting process. The committee also recommended funding for community housing and resources project, Spoonbill Preserve, which is on Sanibel. That recommendation is to provide up to $5 million above and beyond this $170 million list that we have on the screen. If that is approved, staff will work very closely with CHR and our HUD representatives to determine how the project can move forward within and meet all of the HUD compliance requirements. One point of interest I wanted to share, if these projects are funded, that will obligate approximately $300 million towards the development and preservation of affordable housing units. Just for comparison, over the last ten years, from all federal, state, and local funding sources, the county has been able to allocate 34 million. So, this amount is about 10 times more than we've been able to do in the last 10 years. I'm available for any questions.
Chairman, may I? So, the proposal has been to potentially fund all 170 million, even though we've allocated about 150, and then maybe even another 5 million for the CHR on top of that. Could you share with us some options of how we would cover that difference between the 150 to 175?
Yeah, absolutely. So, even though there was 150 million released as part of the NOFA, the CDBGR action plan actually budgets a total of 300 million for affordable housing. So, there is a remaining balance even after the rehab projects that we have that we could use to fund these.
Okay. What was the original plan for the balance, the other 150 then?
We were going to evaluate how this application process went and then come back to you all and see if we wanted to do another round or if there was additional direction.
Okay. Thanks so much. That answers my question.
Any other questions?
I have a question. If you could go back to the map before, that shows the placements and this, this is talking, so if somebody's listening for the first time when they see this map, and this is going to help us, I think, in the future and after today. When you look at this map, obviously, we know how the funds were based upon criteria, why the committees did what they did, the staff, and thank you to all the committees, the other volunteers and the staff working on this. But for us in the future, when we look at this map, somebody's going to say, well, if you look at the impact from the storm, they're going to say, well, that was Pine Island Cape Coral, the shoreline, but nine out of mostly 10 of the projects are in the city of Fort Myers. I understand it's for affordable housing, but what other explanation can we say other than the value of the property, why those sites were chosen within the city of Fort Myers?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, project readiness was a big factor. If they had development orders, all of their funding lined up. The other factor to consider this is if you looked at all of the applications that were received, a large portion of them were located within the city of Fort Myers, so kind of a game of statistics.
And I understand... And I understand based on being shovel-ready, but the Cape Coral, so with Cape Coral in the future, if they ask, why didn't we get, see, the more projects within our area of Cape Coral, since it's a larger city geographically, they have, they're permitting, they have a lot of shovel-ready properties, why were those sites not chosen over those sites over the city of Fort Myers?
Yeah, so there were a couple of projects within Cape Coral. One of the other factors that I mentioned that were considered was the housing type. So the ones that were most ready within the city of Cape Coral were senior housing. We have about four senior housing developments that are on the list to be awarded. So trying to balance out, creating enough of family units, workforce units, as well as those for households with disabilities and the seniors.
I, I'm just asking because if someone's listening and they see this map, they say, why didn't Cape or Pine Island, other areas of the county saw the same topic ranking? So, thank you.
Question. As far as the underwriting, I recognize the next step, but you don't know whether these projects you're recommending are financing ready?
So we have started some initial underwriting to confirm that they have all of their financing lined up. However, we don't have final credit underwriting reports for some of them from their primary lenders or their tax credit lenders.
So the answer is no. Okay. You know, in addition to talk about Commissioner Penegras, I'm uncomfortable with the allocation since 89% of it goes to Fort Myers, and I'm not trying to take anything away, but one of the criteria you said were geographic distribution, and we're not following geographic distribution at all. I mean, I'm glad Sanibel's going to have an opportunity to pull up, but when I look at, you know, the different impacts, I struggle with not trying to have other areas. Cape Coral is certainly a large city, and I believe something needs to go there. Sanibel, you know, again, when you look at the DR component of this, you know, they certainly have the greatest impact on this. So I'm really disheartened on what's actually been allocated and certainly need a more geographic distribution, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
We, Mr. Chair, appreciate what you're saying there. I think the challenge for the committee and even us as staff is, what you're looking at is predominantly where the applications were, were made. I mean, the city of Cape, city of Cape Coral is served by the recommended projects in blue and green, and there are two projects that Ms. Sutton talked about that are senior housing, but outside of that, you know, the Sanibel project is the only application that we received on the island. The committee was really careful to recommend the two projects in the corridor leading to the island that probably otherwise, if you just, if you just took financing and development approvals into account, they may not have been awarded otherwise. So I just, I, I, we do understand, but I do want to assure you also that your committee did try hard to, to work with what they had in terms of applications.
And I appreciate both your comments. I certainly was inundated yesterday with a variety of different people that came through my door. They have very different opinions, to say the least. Moreover, you know, just when you look at this and trying to make sure we distribute this throughout the, you know, community, I hear about being ready, readiness, but with the exception of '24 and some deadlines associated with that, we are in, you know, November of '24 and the allocations and whatever won't be for '25. So I struggle with the readiness aspect because there's still a while left on the '25 calendar since we haven't actually entered the '25 calendar. So those are my comments for now. I certainly want to embrace the public. I have quite a few cards here. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, Chairman, I, I certainly sympathize with what you're talking about, with a, a better geographic distribution. I mean, this is politically dangerous, but I'll just be completely honest, looking at it, I will say this, I'm having a hard time struggling to make the rational nexus between what this money is doing in relation to the hurricane. You know what I mean? If you think about what damage Hurricane Ian did to our area, it, it really didn't do massive amounts of damage to city of Fort Myers proper. The damage was Pine Island, was the barrier islands, it was the coastal communities. I understand that there are rules here that say, obviously, we have to direct this money towards communities that meet the low to moderate income thresholds, but I just, I, I'm struggling big picture with, why did HUD give us this money to build this affordable housing when it doesn't seem like it's helping the communities that were hurt the most from the hurricane? But, you know, that, that was just my thought. I mean, is this, what was their thought process? But I do, I do think the staff has put together a very good, you know, process here for us to follow, but I, I do, I think there's something to be desired on the geographic distribution here, and I'll just leave it at that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. I think it's really important to listen to the public, and then we could have a discussion after everyone weaves in on this. I think there's good.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we'd like, could we respond to your question?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Hammond, I, you know, not wanting to necessarily answer for HUD, but the, the technical answer to your question is that we were able to use this money for affordable housing because Hurricane Ian exacerbated the shortfall of affordable housing that existed in our community prior to the hurricane. And so as part of the action plan, we did an unmet needs analysis. We were able to demonstrate that indeed it, it made the shortfall of affordable housing worse. In terms of the geographic location of these projects, again, there's a dearth of proposals to be had, for instance, on Fort Myers Beach, on Sanibel, on Pine Island. In fact, there were no applications at all from Fort Myers Beach or Pine Island, as you would expect. These would be very difficult projects to do there. So I, that may not be a satisfactory answer, but it's just the reality that we face of, of where these projects are located.
Yeah. So, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, so if I'm hearing it correctly, though, it wasn't necessarily meant to replace housing that was lost due to the hurricane. It was money that was meant to help answer the already existent affordable housing problem that we had in Lee County that was then made worse by the hurricane, I guess.
Yes, sir. That's well put. I think the, the replacement housing program is really your Lee cares program, and, and that helps individuals who experience damage from Ian.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, I definitely will be listening to public comment for sure, too.
Any other comments before I call public comment? Mr. Hardey, you got some other card? Thank you. My first speaker is Daniel Acosta. You can come up. And if you're speaking on a particular project, if you tell us about the project, that'd be great.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Daniel Acosta. I'm the president and chief development officer for an affordable housing development firm out of South Florida, Accruva Community Developers. I'm here this morning to advocate for two of our applications for CDBGDR. We have two developments that were submitted, scored above 80. Our projects, our developments are fully funded. What does that mean? We have commitment letters from construction lender, permanent lender, the equity investor that monetizes the tax credits that are part of the capital stack, and, and bonds, tax-exempt bonds. We submitted these two applications. They're both located in the city of Cape Coral. Each of the developments is 160 units. One will serve the elderly demographics, age, restricted to age 62 and older. The other will serve workforce housing, our first respondents, law enforcement, educators, et cetera. These communities will run concurrently. We're asking or advocating to be added to the list or reinstated back into the list. We're not asking to replace any of the already 10 selected developments, understanding that there's still ample funds. We're asking for 20 million for each. A very good use of the funds, approximately $125,000 per unit, is, is our ask in comparison to other applicants that may have asked for the same amount for less number of units. So 320 units in the city of Cape Coral, underscoring some of the demographics or statistics that were quoted earlier. City of Cape Coral represents 30% of the population in, in Lee County, and yet, no, no development has been awarded in the city. So again, we're advocating that we reinstated and consider for approval for funding. We, getting funding or being truly finance-ready is a difficult challenge to do. Delaying this or giving us an opportunity in the future means we have to return those bonds, means that, as we all know, these natural disasters have an impact in the industry, construction industry, right? Construction costs go up, there's a lot of volatility, labor, insurance, builder's risk, ultimately property and casualty. Those are all numbers that we, we have a, a strong visibility now, which is what we presented. So we're imploring that, that be reconsidered. Overall, in the aggregate, these developments during construction and, and permanent stabilized communities will generate approximately 762 jobs in the city and overall county, and will have a, a financial economic impact of about 82 million. So important. You'll, you'll be in excess of 2,100 units in total if we're reconsidered again and approved. And so that's why I'm here this morning, to advocate for those two developments to be reconsidered. Open to any questions, if, if any.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Andrew Krebs.
Good morning, and thank you. I am Andrew Krebs. I'm the CEO of Onda Housing Group, a family office, large family office platform based in Naples, and we are investing huge into Lee County. First of all, thank you for your support on awarding CDBGDR to Bayshore Pines and North Fort Myers. It is on track to close before its year-end financing deadline. I am here to seek your support for Wave at Colonial, ranked seventh overall, but not recommended for funding today. Wave at Colonial is 358 units in a strategic location close to jobs and booming commercial growth, but no place for those workers to live and their families to live. It maximizes the benefit to Lee County and its hard-working families. At 358 attainable units, adding just this project to the 10 in front of you today will increase the total number of units funded today by 24%. Let me repeat that. If you just add this one deal, you would increase the units produced by 24%. Wave only needs $56,000 of CDBGDR funding per unit, which is less than half of the funding per unit requested by the 10 deals recommended today. That is efficiency. Let me leave you with this. A survey of nearly 2,000 surrounding units charged rents of nearly $2,200 per month compared to $1,200 per month at Wave. $1,000 per month puts food on the table, gas in the car, and kids in childcare. $12,000 per year makes the American dream possible. Multiply that rent savings by 358 units, and you get over $4 million in annual economic impact per year. This one deal provides 24% more units, twice as efficiently, and creates over $4 million in rent savings towards economic growth for the local economy, with a well-capitalized local developer leading the charge. That is return on investment. That is maximizing impact. That moves the needle in building a stronger and more vibrant Lee County. This NOFA was released seven months ago. It is time to move so we can get shovels in the ground. Please consider awarding Wave at Colonial today without further delay. Thank you for your consideration and all you do to make this the best place to live.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Aiken.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Richard Aiken with Henderson Franklin. I'm here this morning on behalf of the Lee County Housing Authority, which has two specific projects that went through this application process. They're located off Barrett Road, which is in North Fort Myers, just outside the city of Cape Coral, between Pondella and Pine Island Road there. And this project, these two projects basically consist of, we've got 96 family units and 82 senior units. Currently existing there are 50 single-family affordable housing units, and this would be a redevelopment project. One of the main issues that, that this project faces is that it's not in a qualified basis boost in area, it's not in a qualified census tract. So from a funding perspective, this project faces some challenges due to its location that some of the other projects do not. Unfortunately, this project fell just outside of the 10 recommended by the committee. I do want to thank the committee and the, and the county staff, as I know that a lot of work went into this. A lot of discussion went on as far as shovel readiness, and I know all the various projects are at various stages of shovel readiness. This project does have the entitlements necessary to do the redevelopment, and this is, as I, as I sort of mentioned, it's a redevelopment project from 50 single-family affordable housing to multifamily. The existing units that are there have been deemed at this point in time to be, necessary to be torn down by HUD there at that point in time, and so we need to redevelop it. There are some other things, I think, through the shovel-ready process that we've discussed throughout the committee process and throughout with staff about what needs to be done to make this project shovel-ready. Well, I mean, there are, I guess, some development orders and things like that, but we are pretty much right there. This property is owned by the Lee County Housing Authority. These units would be affordable in perpetuity because it is owned by the Lee County Housing Authority, which I think, as you know, is an entity created by the Board of County Commissioners. It's been around since the 60s, and its charge is to provide affordable housing in perpetuity here in Lee County. So with that, we do look forward to other opportunities through this process or other processes to get funding for this project, as we think it is an important one here in Lee County. Marcus Goodson, who's with Lee County Housing Authority, is here with me. If you have any other questions of us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Marcia Davis.
Well, stumble down here. Good morning. Thank you again. I'm Marcia Davis, the executive director of the Housing Authority of the city of Fort Myers, and I just want to thank you and obviously thank the staff and the evaluation committee that went through so much work to hear all the presentations last week for kind of the second time. I just want to point out two of ours, number seven on the list that we're, the 10 recommended, is Lafayette Square. Obviously, the CBDR money was, is here because of the hurricane and the damage that was done to affordable housing units. This is to develop and replace Royal Palm Towers, which had significant damage to it. So we are ready. I don't know how much more ready I can get with, I have a permit in hand. So this is the last piece of financing, the other portions that we do have. So we, in all essence, are shovel-ready, ready to go. So very excited about that. Number two, we have Southward Village Phase Two, which is 151 units that are mixed income, ranging from 50% AMI to 80% MI and 30 market rate, making it a true mixed income community. That is part of our Choice Neighborhoods grant that's leveraged over $360 million in a two-mile radius of Southward Village. And that development was deemed obsolete by HUD during our process. The hurricane further ripped away ceilings and roofs so that we had to immediately start relocating residents, and so this is a part of leverage with other state resources on each phase. Ironically, Phase Two and Phase Four of this project will be going up at the same time because FHFC had awarded additional funding to the last phase. So we appreciate being able to tell our story and the evaluation committee making the recommendations to fund our projects. Our financing is in place, and all of our approvals are in place. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Mayor Richard Johnson.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission as well. I come to you today as representative of the city of Sanibel and community housing and resources. For those of you that may not be aware, or the public may not be aware, CHR is the public housing authority for the city of Sanibel. They've been that for over 45 years. This is a not-for-profit organization that several of us in the room have been very involved with over the years. I recognize, after sitting through the meeting the other day with the committee, and I want to, I want to thank the committee for the fine work that they've done. This was an audacious task that they undertook, and they did a wonderful job with this. I recognize that our application for the Spoonbill project for CHR doesn't exactly fit the mold, doesn't exactly check all the boxes. However, that doesn't mean that it's not important, as well as the projects that have been selected for funding. Those are good projects, and they should be funded. But in addition to that, I believe that it's very important that we work together to find a way to fund the Spoonbill project as well. I have the full support of the council. I have the full support of the city of Sanibel. I have the support of the community of Sanibel and the community of Captiva. I use the word "community" not lightly because community is very important as we go through this. The community is made up of a diverse population. A healthy community is made up of a diverse population. One of the ways that we do that on Sanibel is we do, we welcome others into our community, that we want them to be part of our community, not drive from somewhere else to work there, but actually live there amongst us. If you know anything about our organization and how they've gone about affordable housing on the island, you, you know that that's exactly the case. I implore you- I implore you to listen to your constituents, listen to the people of Sanibel and Captiva, and find a way to get this project funded as well. This, too, is an important project, and I want to say thank you for the work that you've done, thank you for the work of the committee, but I want to finish with one point. CDBGDR, Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Recovery. It's unfortunate that the City of Fort Myers Beach did not put forth a project, but there's no two communities that didn't suffer more from this disaster than the communities of Fort Myers Beach and the City of Sanibel. Thank you very much for everything you do. I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Nicole McHale.
Nicole McHale, I'm the Executive Director of Community Housing and Resources. I want to thank the Commissioners, I want to thank staff, and I want to thank the committee for all of your time that you're putting into this. It's a really difficult time for our community and very difficult to try to figure out how to best help our communities. I want to thank everybody for reviewing our application again and giving it another look. As the mayor said, disaster relief. And we are ground zero of the disaster, Hurricane Ian. We have been around for 45 years, and we have been developing and building affordable housing, and we were the first affordable housing program in the state of Florida. We have this 6.7 acres of land that we've identified that we could build on. The land is close to resources, that the residents are a mile away from a supermarket, from a job, maybe three miles away from a, the school. Not to mention that we also partner with Fish of Sandcap, they're a social service organization that can provide programming for our residents either at the property, in their apartments, or they can transport our residents to their office space and provide the programming there. It's a critical time in our community. We have had 137 inquiries for housing, and 45 of those inquiries have been working homeless individuals. They're living out of their cars, they're living on the floors of the businesses that they work at. We, we, you know, why Sanibel? Why build on Sanibel? 35 percent of our residents do not own a vehicle. They are biking and they are walking to work and to the resources. That's why it's the most important to be able to have this project and be able to build on Sanibel. So again, thank you for the time, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Marcia Ellis.
Good morning, again, Marcia Ellis for the record, and I am so happy to see this visualization, and that was really my primary reason initially for wanting to give comment, because I was trying to dig through the item and find a visualization so that I could see where these projects are located. I think it's so important for the community to see, for all of us to see, so that we can get a handle on what's being done to approach affordable housing. I would love to see this further developed, to be linked for, to have a resource that includes this information, more details about the projects, and then also how it's fitting in to the existing affordable housing that's in communities as well, so that we can have a better informed picture. Let me say that I did spend a lot of time at the Resilient Lee meetings that took up the issue of affordable housing and recovery, spending of recovery funds. And I think there, there has been, it is a political landmine, and there has been a lot of stigma associated with affordable housing. You know, we've tried to approach that with some fancy use of language, like, let's talk attainable, for instance, to make it a little bit more palatable to communities, because we had a lot of destruction in markets that are seeking properties for luxury market-rate development that has a higher return. And so the people who are in the business of affordable housing are really doing a service to the community because they are accepting a lower profit margin. It truly is a calling to work in this field, and it is an area of expertise. I want to say I respect very much Sanibel stepping forward, being a leader in our community to embrace affordable housing and take down that barrier and that stigma. However, we understand that the NOFA requirements are phased, and that those funds are meant to help people to recover that don't have the ability to recover from disasters first. When you go out to Sanibel, you're not seeing people living in bushes, high on drugs, and living with a shopping cart that has all of their belongings. You don't see elderly being pushed out of their homes. That is the reality that we're experiencing, more so in communities like Fort Myers proper downtown. Those are the realities, and those are, in my opinion, where our priorities should be so that we can move to do a more inclusive approach to affordable housing in the broader community with our municipality partners. And I respect, again, like, very much respect the leadership that Sanibel is showing here. And I very much appreciate this public forum that's having this reasoned conversation and the hearing from the public in pursuit of the public interest. Thank you.
Tom Rossi.
My name is Tom Rossi. I'm with Renaissance Development. We focus on building workforce housing without the use of 4 percent or 9 percent low-income housing. Today, we have Project 30, Bloom, Fort Myers. It is about a mile south on Lee, a mile south of Lee Memorial on 41, in an area that needs transition. The work, the work in the projects that we do, the work in the projects that we do are a little bit unique from the other projects in that we don't need a 4 percent or 9 percent credit. So from a shovel-ready standpoint, not only do we have our building permit, our building permit is approved and ready to be picked up, but we don't need any support from Florida Housing Finance or from the County Bond Commission. We're using public banks for financing, like a Key Bank or JP Morgan Chase, and that, on top of that, we're providing a lot of units, a lot of bank for our buck from a public subsidy standpoint. The only, the only support we need is the CDBG grant, and then we'll be able to pride over 174 units of affordable housing to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Allen.
Michael Allen, Revital Development, for the record. First off, just want to thank Commissioner Sandaly for your years of dedication and leading us with integrity, so thank you very much for your service. I'm here today to speak on behalf of some of our applications and understanding the monumental tasks that, that staff took on. I think they did an incredible job from the beginning till, till where we're at today over the past couple of years. In fact, on the list of recommended is a project, The Residents Two, that we submitted that's recommended for funding, which will be, if approved, the first development in Lee County for individuals suffering from developmental disabilities. That was our approach when submitting applications, is focusing on the demographics that were most vulnerable, often unheard and ignored. So what I'm here for today is to speak to advocate for two additional projects that we have that have not been selected. First is Ava Square. It's 121 units of proposed senior housing elderly in the city of Cape Coral. We respectfully request your consideration to allocate funding for this development. It is shovel-ready, we do have all permits in place, impact fees have been paid, building site and additional water district permits all approved. Couple of highlights from staff's scoring and recommendations. It was the highest-ranked and only Tier One application submitted within the city of Cape Coral. It was one of eight applications that received a Tier One designation out of 61. Entering the Second Evaluation Committee through staff's averaging of the two highest scores for all application, Ava Square received the third highest award. We worked closely with city staff, elected officials, and residents to identify location and demographic, which is why we selected the location and senior population. Again, there was preference for proximity to Fort Myers Beach and Sanibel with great, great reasoning, but no consideration for Pine Island and other barrier islands, which ours is the highest-ranked, closest in proximity to those. Out of the 18 developments and nearly $260 million of funding for single-family and multifamily development, not one project, not one unit is awarded in the city of Cape Coral, so a little bit concerned, as, as everybody's mentioned here. The second project is Tiltin' Court, 72 units located in the city of Fort Myers. It would be an affordable housing and supportive housing development that has dedicated units for individuals suffering from homelessness. The CDBGDR Action Plan specifically addresses the homeless crisis, encouraging developers to promote these units for individuals suffering from, at risk at homelessness, and we're the only one out of 61 applications that did. We're bringing in one of the largest and leading nonprofit developers of supportive housing, Carfor, in which we'll have at least 25 percent of the units for individuals suffering or at risk of homelessness, and another 25 percent with a broader definition such as youths aging out of foster care. So today, we ask for your compassion and support in providing some additional funding for Ava Lee, Ava Square, and Tiltin' Court. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anyone that hasn't filled out a card, anyone would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back up to the Commissioners. Thoughts, questions?
So, I've got a couple of questions. Glenn or Dave? So, this has always been a long process, and I thank you for all the staff and the committee. So, did the committee, and we put this together a year ago, probably, so the committee had a task put together and the staff, based upon your understanding, did, what's before us today, did they apply and come out with a ranking based upon our direction originally?
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Commissioner Penegras, yes. The answer is an unqualified yes. The committee spent an incredible amount of time, in fact, they had two separate meetings lasting four hours each, but more importantly, I know in talking to the individual members, they spent countless hours poring through our web portal where the applications, all the supporting documents, the technical analyses, all of these things are there for their review. So, you know, there are a lot of, we had a billion, over a billion dollars of requests for this money, so there are a lot of good projects that, that weren't recommended, but I really do believe your committee did, did work in, in coming up with the list.
Based upon the agenda item before us today, the motion requested, is there another opportunity in the future for others to come forward again that were, they're tentative right now or previously, or that may be coming forward again in the future?
In terms of another round of funding, Commissioner, that will be up to this body. There, there are some, if you awarded everything that's recommended, you would be at approximately $110 million just for multifamily. So that would leave roughly $90 million. I think the decision this board will have to make in the future is, do you want to use that money for additional infrastructure? Do you want to use it for perhaps home elevations and some other things that you've talked about? Do you want to use it for additional rounds of multifamily affordable housing development? All of those options might be available to you. Some of it depends on if HUD gets, gives us any additional flexibility or not.
Okay. I'm just asking because obviously we get asked this a lot every day in our community, people will, why don't you use this money to build a higher seawall to keep storm surge happening? So we, this not for, this is for affordable housing based upon the criteria that. If, if we made any changes to the current item as it is, they have to went through the ring stretch, what happens if we made any changes based upon the item before us today?
The two options that we were looking at for recommendations was either award the remaining $110 million under the NOFA, which gets you through seven of the 10 projects, or release some additional funds and, and fund all 10, which takes you up to an additional $170 million, and that's, when you couple it with the $40 million already awarded, that's where you get $210 million total. If, if you wanted to add additional projects above that, just, just a few things to consider, one of which is you'd have a lot of projects coming online at the same time. And there are questions about supply chain and supply overhang and all of the things that go along with that, as well as your staff's capacity. And then the other, the other factor, of course, is what we just talked about is, that would then limit your ability to reprogramming any of these funds for, for other purposes, infrastructure, what have you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm good. Do you want my colleagues to have a say?
Well, Chairman, if I may, then, can we just go into a little more detail, then? I, I think sometimes, obviously, we've got a tough decision here. We've got some really great folks that have spoken today and talked about the merits of some amazing projects, right? And first of all, I want to start with gratitude and appreciation for the citizen panel that poured over these applications and came up with these recommendations for us. This could not have been easy, because I know it hasn't been easy for any of us sitting up here. It's a lot of information to go through. Everybody seems to have an amazing story to tell, and, and a lot of these projects are much needed and have great merit. So when you get to tough decisions like that, you kind of have to fall back on the process, right? So can you go into more depth and detail on what was the vetting process? How did we get to today? Maybe kind of give me a timeline with a little more detail on how we got to today so that we can understand, did we get the process that we were looking for when we asked you to go out and vet all of these applications?
Yes, sir. The application window was open for, and forgive me, I don't have the timeline in front of me, so with all of our programs, I'm probably mixing and matching, but.
Sure.
The application window was open for a few months. It closed in early summer, at which point a technical staff review was undertaken, and that staff review was made by three separate analysts who scored each application independently based on the criteria contained in the NOFA. That determined which projects were eligible to move forward for committee consideration. And, you know, it, you have heard reference to Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three projects. That, I, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that because, you know, really the, the idea of the technical review is to make sure that these were eligible applications. And so then that was forwarded to the committee. The committee took their first crack at this in, I can't remember, was it August or September, Jamie? Yeah, end of August. And they worked their way through it at that time, and that's when we came forward with their recommendation to award the three projects in green on the map, as well as the five single-family home projects in blue on the map. And, and the board did that. And the committee asked for additional time to continue their review. They wanted to take specific presentations from each of the remaining applicants and have a chance to ask them even more questions, which they did. So every applicant during the second committee meeting made a presentation and then answered questions from both committee and staff. And then, you know, the staff, or the committee, rather, formulated the recommendations before you today.
Okay, thank you. You know, I mean, Commissioners, I'll just share that, I mean, listening to the process be outlined, I can't think of anything differently I would have done to get to this point today from a process standpoint. And, and again, I appreciate the amount of effort and time that was put into the recommendations that were brought before us today. I don't know, sometimes when you have a really tough decision, you kind of break it down into parts and think about what you definitely are okay with and what, you know, you want to have more discussion on. I can tell you just my personal thoughts on something I'm definitely okay with was, there was a question in the agenda item today about the committee saying that we should work with Community Housing Resources on Sanibel for $5 million for low and moderate-income housing units on Sanibel. I am definitely ready to have that conversation and talk about that $5 million for the simple fact that Sanibel was devastated by this storm, and I believe that if we're going to call this Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, then some of the dollars have to go to the disaster area. So I don't know if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, but I'd even be willing to make a motion for just that part of it right now so that we can get that question at least answered, to, to go ahead and give staff direction to work on the CHR question that was outlined in the agenda item.
I certainly don't have any issue with that, my colleagues.
Would we, just for clarity, would it be a motion for the whole thing, including that, or would it be?
I, I think we'd take it in parts, you know, and, unless you want to make a motion for, for the whole thing right now, I just.
No, I just was trying to make sure we do it right. So. So, the federal criteria is, can we do both? Would it be included, or would it be separate motions for that? Based upon his, Richard.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If it's the desire of the motion maker, you could do one all-inclusive, but it would be up to the
So, you know, if you actually
Motion as directed.
Yeah. So, it's your pleasure. Somebody's willing to make a motion whenever. It didn't seem like anybody was ready to jump in and make a motion. So, if you read the blue sheet, the blue sheet has motion requested three parts, A, B, and C. I was talking about item C under motion requested, where it says, "Consider authorizing staff to engage with community housing resources to determine the viability of funding Spoonbill Preserve with CDBG-DR funds." I was willing to make motion C right now, if there's a second, and then we could just approve that, and then we can talk about A and B.
I mean, I'd gladly second that. I mean, I certainly want to see us move forward, and for many reasons that you articulated, Commissioner Hammond, but moreover, and again, someone that has, for full disclosure, governed in Sanibel for a long time, CHR has been around for forty-plus years. I had the privilege of going through and sitting on that committee, certainly as family members have, and honestly, they have been addressing affordable housing for quite some time. So, accolades to them, and certainly, I want to, A, reward the area that's devastated, but B, also have a special place for a community that certainly has addressed affordable housing for the last forty years. So, it's a reason that I feel compelled to do that. I think that makes sense. Whether or not they'll meet the criteria, that'll be something during underwriting, because I think most of these items are going to have to go through some underwriting, and I wouldn't be surprised if some of the items don't necessarily get to the point where they can move forward, they will fall out because of other criterias. So, with that in mind, Commissioner Hammond, I certainly would second your motion.
Okay.
Any discussion on that point?
So, is this for C, though, the motion?
This is C alone.
Okay.
Any public comment on that item? Seeing none, let's come back to the day, come on up, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. One point that I'd like to make, and I certainly appreciate the consideration that you're giving this item today. I recognize that it's a tough one, and these are our tough decisions that you're about to make. One thing that differentiates is that, Chair, as you mentioned, this organization has been around, supported by the city of Sanibel for forty-five years, and looking at affordable housing within our community. It's not set aside on a backstreet somewhere. It's right there and mixed within the community, and if you've ever, I know you've all been out, but when you come out, I challenge you to go find where those properties are. You may be a little bit surprised just how integrated into the community they are. The other thing that I'd like to share with you is that these dollars that you're committing are going to be committed in perpetuity. All of the projects that we do within Community Housing and Resources are not short-term projects or a limited lifetime project. These are committed in perpetuity and will be there forever. So, thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate the work that you do today.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, any other discussion?
I was just going to say, I was going to support the motion, but initially, after the comment, I was ready to make a motion to include that too, but for the whole item, just that we could do it together based upon the criteria, but I'll support the motion as is now.
Most by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Rain. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Maybe a thought, just to give clarity on this, is, is there any way that we can go and go back to the allocations we've done? How much we've actually appropriated thus far? How much is in this lot? How much is remaining? To get a full gravity of the entire program so we understand exactly where we are? The other issue that I'm struggling with, and this is just me, is I've been given an awful lot of different scoring measures, and they vary from sheet to sheet to sheet. Some ones move higher, some move lower, and I struggle with some of the scoring criteria with this. So, I'm just trying to understand, what are our choices here? What actually has been allocated? And what can we continue to do? So, if you give me some ballparks, that would be really helpful, as far as the entire allocation, and what was the direction you got from the commission in far as the buckets, et cetera?
Yes, sir. Do you mean all of the programs within?
Well, yeah, I'm trying to understand, so the public knows we got a billion dollars. Not the average person understands that we allocated X to infrastructure, Y to single-family, Z to multiple-family. I'm just trying to get a flavor for, what was the direction we gave you? What have we actually allocated thus far? What's remaining? So, we have an appreciation of where we're going. The objective, I think, we all had is trying to maximize housing. There was a critical housing issue within the county, and, you know, I also look at certain situations and applaud all the people that are trying to do this, but trying to get to the point of maximizing the number of units to address an issue we've had forever.
Yes, sir. I will take it one by one and try to recall as best I can, since I don't have it in front of me. But, well, I'll start with multifamily, since that is the biggest single category, and it's the one in front of you. The board allocated three hundred million dollars in total for that, and for new development. An additional fifty million dollars for rehabilitation of existing units, so three hundred fifty million dollars in total for multifamily affordable housing. The rehabilitation projects were the first ones that you awarded, and I think we awarded forty-one, do you remember? Yeah, about, call it forty-one million, so you've got about, I'm using round numbers, but you have somewhere around nine million dollars left in that bucket. What's before you today is the three hundred million for new development of multifamily. Now, within that, our direction from the board was to release that in a couple of tranches for a number of reasons. Not do it all at one time for two reasons that I understood. One was, that might just be too much product flooding the market at a single time. And secondly, because if HUD were to grant the county additional flexibility with these funds, there might be some other things that you wanted to do beyond just affordable housing development, i.e. infrastructure, et cetera. But that's, so that's where you stand right now. If you award everything recommended today, that would take you to two hundred ten million out of the three hundred million for new development. Let's see, I got, the next category, I would say, would be infrastructure, and there you had two hundred twenty-nine million dollars for, let me just make sure I'm right, two hundred thirty-nine million dollars for critical public facilities and infrastructure. You have awarded all of those funds, so that category is, for the most part, closed out with the exception of, you had ten million dollars set aside to Harden-Hertz Arena, and HUD has not allowed us to do that thus far. But other than that, you've closed that out. We have one hundred thirty-two million dollars approximately for HMGP match. You all have committed to matching every jurisdiction's HMGP awards if there's CDBG-DR-eligible infrastructure projects, and that, that's about one hundred and thirty-two million You've got ten million dollars for home purchase assistance. That is well underway and is projected to use that entire allotment. We've got one hundred forty-five million dollars for your LEA cares program. That's your individual housing. All of those awards are not yet in place. We are going to underspend that category, but we just can't tell you yet exactly by how much, because all those damage assessments are still underway and the awards, it takes a long time for the homeowners to accept those awards. The big category that you allocated that will free up some funds for you is voluntary residential acquisition. We were trying to do some buyouts for repetitive loss properties. For a host of reasons, there were no takers for that, so you do have fifty-six and a half million dollars that's sitting in that tranche of funds that could be repurposed. Then you have fifteen million dollars for public services. That is all spoken for. Twenty-five million dollars for planning. You awarded all but six million dollars of that, and you've already repurposed that to infrastructure. And I think, I think that really covers it, Commissioner.
That's really, really helpful, and I appreciate that more than you might know. And I appreciate the fact, so, in the three hundred million dollars for multifamily, we just, the criteria is multifamily, right? I mean, I've heard different words up here, as I've talked about, senior residents, non-seniary residents, but it's really multifamily trying to address that issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And then obviously, there's some fallout in all these criterias, because you got to go through underwriting, as we've seen, almost in most of the allocations, there's been some residue left over. So, there is money, obviously, that we'll still have to reshuffle deck and look at. So, with that in mind, I just think it was really helpful to understand where we've allocated funds, what we've done in that regard, and, you know, I'm struggling with the fact that we do have, you know, another ninety-plus million dollars, and what we won't know is, you know, even the items that are before us, we're not going to know how it's going to go through from an underwriting point of view, and ultimately, are they funding-ready or not? That's going to be a big criteria, because if you can't be fully funded, the project's going to fall apart. What's unusual about this, it's a very complicated stacking of financing that's put together. It's a world I've lived in for a long time in a different silo, but very familiar with stacking, financing together, and trying to achieve the end goal. And it's a complicated process, because if you don't have one of the elements, really, the whole stack falls apart, and that is very clear on what it does, you know, and have a lot of understanding of the way the market works. And, you know, moreover, you know, I had an interesting meeting yesterday with a person that's very integral in bond and municipal bonds, and really just understood the whole municipal bond aspect of this, because there may not necessarily be enough municipal bonds to actually fulfill our request. So, the timing of this is important, because in all areas, this is actually financed and really fueled by municipal funding. And that's an element you need, so in every year, there's just an allocation of X dollars, especially when it comes to housing. So, we might do what we do here, and the funding may not be available, because it's first come, first served, and there's money that's not available to do the project. It's going to be an interesting process. There's an anxiety to certainly move as quickly as we can, but part of the problem with that clearly is, we can award too many projects and try to have them move too quickly, and then really harm ourselves by not having the financing available for this. So, I'm just struggling with, you know, the urgency, and we're moving it quickly. I understood why we did the first silo of about thirty-nine million dollars, it was year-end, and even from what I'm hearing, at least on those applicants, some of them are not going to make year-end as well, and we set a criteria up to make sure we do that. But with all that in mind, you know, I still go back to the issues. I am very grateful that we allocated money to Sanibel, and I think they have certainly walked the walk and talked the talk in affordable housing, and disaster just gives them other reasons, so I'm hopeful they could work through their process, and I'm glad we did that. Moreover, I'm just looking at these items and just struggling with the fact that geographically, there's nothing at Cape Coral, and I struggle with that in ways that I can't even begin. And someone that actually has been in affordable housing, someone that is actually in Section Eight, I probably have a different place in my heart, and not to say anything against you gentlemen at all, but it is a very humbling and very eye-opening experience I went through as a young adult, and I can tell you that this program and maximizing units is certainly very important to me, and I'm sure it's important to all of you. Those are the issues I'm struggling with right now. I appreciate the allocation we've done, but I certainly have a problem and will not be able to just allocate this and not have something go to Cape Coral. I really struggle with that. They're the largest population here, and, you know, if we look at the way this is allocated right now, eighty-nine percent of our funding is going to go to Fort Myers. And I'm even separating Fort Myers between North Fort Myers and Fort Myers, because the other eleven percent is in North Fort Myers. So, I'm just struggling, and I appreciate certain areas, Fort Myers Beach, Pond Island, Astero, Nida didn't apply, but Cape certainly applied, and I certainly, as one Commissioner, want to make sure we allocate funds to Cape Coral.
Let me ask that question, Mr. Chairman, to our staff then, Mr. County Manager, or maybe Glenn. So, I don't believe there's an appetite to take anything away from anybody who's been ranked, who's made it in the ten. I think the committee did a good job. I think they ranked this correctly, but what options do you have for us to maybe approve the ten, plus what options do you have for us to then maybe get something for Cape Coral and be more geographically diverse than we are currently?
Yes, sir. You certainly do have the funding flexibility to award additional projects if you want to, you know, understanding that the money's there and can be used for multiple things. The thought that comes to mind in the moment is, we might ask the city of Cape Coral, they had their housing expert on the panel. She is intimately familiar with all of the proposals that were made within the city limits. It might behoove us to confer with city staff to understand if they have a preferred project and understand where that project is in terms of development approvals and financing approvals. Just one thought.
Glenn, just to follow up, just for edification, there's still plus or minus about ninety million dollars that's left over in this silo. So, based on the list we have, based on the scoring we have, there's still an opportunity in our discretion to certainly allocate and or appropriate the ninety million dollars, right?
Absolutely.
So, as long as we stay within that, you know, we have some flexibility, we want to pull one or two or three, as long as we stay within the ninety million, we're okay, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question. One clarity? I have a question. Based upon the current ranking, if we approve this today, items A and B, and we go forward, and one of those projects over the next year loses funding, financing, something happens, they walk away, they don't accept the money, they have to give it back. How would that money be reallocated? Would it go back into the original fund and go through a ranking structure again? Would the whole committee process go over there, or is that something we could do with the current information we have now? And also, some of the projects at Cape Coral, was it, they had issues with financing? Is that why some of the rankings didn't come through as high as the other projects?
So, to the first question, Commissioner Penegras, if the funding lapses for a particular project, it would, it would stay in the multifamily affordable housing category until the board moves it.
Okay.
We fully anticipate the board will be making those moves periodically over time. It was never meant to be a static category for all times. So, with respect to the second question, yes, the proposals within the city of Fort Myers are all at various stages in terms of where they stand with all of the development approvals they need, whether that be city of Cape Coral approvals, environmental resource permits, you name it, and then they all also are at various stages in terms of their financing commitments as well.
And one thing I did like, when you see the housing, the type of housing, you have workforce files, and senior living, but they have a lot of senior housing, because also you have households with disability, which I think is obviously the need here in our county and we're first. So, based upon that, I'll make a motion, see where we go with this, to move the item A and B forward to approval, and then obviously encourage staff to work with their other entities to see if there's any funding for that in the future. That's my motion. For the movement of the current projects, A and B forward.
Mr. Chair, if I may? I'm sorry. Did you make?
Right, I thought you were going to say.
I don't need
The only thing I just wanted to remind everybody on the ninety million, I believe it provides you some flexibility on things that we talked about. If we get the waiver, it'll allow for potential buyback or buyout of properties that we have, the board had concerns about, as well as potential elevation of certain properties around the community. So, that was some of the flexibility that you had asked us to ensure that we had in there in case we did receive that waiver, so just wanted to provide that information.
And, you know, I think it's fair to say that in the allocation of what Commissioner Penegras was talking about, along with the thirty-nine million dollars, two hundred and ten million, I'll make a stretch here and say it's fairly likely that a project or two will fall out, just because of the stacking that's necessary. This is a complicated situation. I think most people don't understand just how complicated it is to try to get your pieces up, and one piece has the whole project fall apart that you lack. So, I appreciate the comments, and I'm not saying we won't. I think there's going to be, as we found in all the allocations, whether it's rehabilitation, at fifty million, we allocated forty-one million. There's money of residue left over, and we really haven't There's money of residue left over, and we really haven't gotten far. At least from what I heard, in the $39 million we allocated, we had a particular criteria for year-end. And what I'm hearing of the three projects right now, it doesn't seem like all three are gonna make our deadline. So our direction was if it didn't, we'd go back in the pot. So same thing. You know, just that in mind. But I appreciate Commissioner Penegras bringing it to our attention and moving forward an item. I'm just trying to, I don't know if we do this in another bite after that, but I'm trying to certainly get something.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Chairman, I'll second his motion for discussion. And then would love to just submit to the motion maker. Would you strengthen that motion just a little bit? So approval of Part A and Part B, and then direction to staff to bring back opportunities to look at projects in Cape Coral. I would just be that explicit, yeah?
I would be happy to. I don't know if it would counter any, but based upon the criteria of the federal funding, if we could designate one area for that criteria to be only, be only one available for that future funding?
Yes, sir.
What do you recommend, perhaps to further staff?
At the apple. Motion to approve A and B, and then direct county staff to work with the city of Cape Coral's staff to determine project feasibility within the city limits and report back to the Board of County Commissioners.
I amend my motion to that.
All right, I'll say.
I just wanna make sure we didn't jeopardize losing funding if you itemize and categorize this one area for demographics or geographical reasons for discrimination for when you have dealing with disabilities, that's gonna be really the criteria that. I know I talked to staff months ago about this. And make sure we didn't lose that funding base upon that.
Yeah, it's a fair question. I'll second that then.
I appreciate that. And let me just, for the record, I've heard with Commissioner Penegras that I just wanna clarify, there would nothing prevent us, based on the list in front of us, if I wanted to select a particular project, if two other people thought that ranked, let's just say, the Cape Coral project, and I pull Renaissance at the Pines out. There'd be nothing to prevent me from doing that. It's scores high enough, the committee certainly is. It just didn't make the first A or B, but it certainly is way up in the criteria. Correct? Is that a fair statement?
I think so, yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're doing this. I appreciate the motion, I appreciate the second. I'm not looking to try to get into any conflicts whatsoever, but I'm just looking at this information, having peeled the onion back, maybe a little bit further because of the financing and the stacking. I certainly know there's items on this list that we could allocate and award to and not have any ramifications as a result of that action. So appreciate the motion and the second on the floor. Any other discussion regarding the motion before?
I just like to go back for a second because I try to get back, this is a very complex issue, whether it's struggles or financing, so on and so forth. But I think for the general constituents, you know, understand that an idea comes to us or a project comes to us, and the staff engages, and they really do the heavy lifting. And then they come back and they brief us, and then we get into these discussions, which are very impactful, especially when we talk about these kind of monies and the intricacies of this and stuff like that. So I just want people to think about this process because the process takes time, and time is frustrating to everybody. Glad we had the discussion today. I hope that we brought some clarity to whether it's dispersion or, you know, some different projects. But I think what we have on the table right now with this motion makes sense. I think really the answer to that is to go back, you know, and to look at where the concerns were, whether it's geographical dispersion or other, or the capital needs, and have the ability to do that and feel a little better about what the end result is. So for the general public, you can get lost in the numbers, you can get lost in the process. There is a process, and it does work. It just takes a bit more work, as we've seen today. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question before I actually move on this motion. What would be the estimated timeframe of coming back with recommendations for the remaining $90 million?
Mr. Chair, do you mean the Cape Coral-specific question, or just $90 million in total?
Well, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we were gonna allocate $300 million to multifamily. In today's action, with the motion that's on the floor, we would move forward with approximately $170 million, coupled with the fact that we've already approved $39 million. There's a remaining $90 million. And obviously, my question is, when might that term before us? And what type of discussion? I understand we're gonna look to Cape Coral, but there's still $90 million, and maybe even perhaps, depending on your timeline, there might be some fallout from the first $39 million if they don't meet the criteria. So I'm just trying to get a parameter, and I certainly wanna try to help. In other areas that you've mentioned, I think they're important.
Yes.
Just trying to get an understanding of the timeline we're dealing with.
Okay, understood. So it'll be pretty fluid, and I think we'll come back to you more than once. But the answer to the immediate question, when would be the first time we come back on, let's call it 90?
Yep.
It's dependent on HUD's answer to the LMI waiver question. So we've asked to reduce the overall burden to spend 70% of these funds on low, moderate-income households. We've asked to reduce that to 50%. If they come back and say, yes, you can do that, that's when you then have some additional flexibility to deploy the monies. And so we're waiting on that answer.
And a follow-up question, just out of curiosity, I appreciate the edification. In the event they said no, are any of the projects in A and B potentially gonna fall out as a result of that action?
No, sir. All of these will still qualify.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ready to move on to the question, and we have a motion, a second, any opposition? None, that approves. And just for clarification, you'll come back, obviously, with that item. You'll come back and work with the city of Cape Coral. You'll try to obviously do some allocations associated with it. Maybe it also would help, as this is a fluid item, if you can continue to maybe give the breakdown you did on the fly, which is great, I took some good copious notes, but then also to understand what residue is left over so we understand just what's here. I also am looking forward to the underwriting criteria. And if you keep us really in the know as the underwriting goes through, because I think you're gonna find some fallout. I do believe there's gonna be a bond concern overall with the amount of funding that's required here, certainly in Florida and Southwest Florida. Thank you. Appreciate the discussion, gentlemen, I really do. Thanks, staff, for all your help. That item is concluded. Now we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to award design contract for Crescent Beach Park and Bowditch Point Regional Park. And I'd like to ask Mr. Gergis to present the item.
Good morning. Inhab Gergis, Construction and Management. This item is to approve a contract with Johnson Engineering LLC in the amount of almost $2.5 million to provide us with design and permits for Bowditch Point Regional Park and Crescent Beach Park. Both parks sustained major damage after Hurricane Ian.
Excuse me. Why don't you just wait a minute till the rest of the people go out in the hallway? Can't hear you.
Yep.
Thank you, Betsy. Could you be so kind as to start over? Thank you.
Sure. So this item is to approve a contract with Johnson Engineering LLC in the amount of $2.5 million to provide us with design and permits for Bowditch Point Regional Park and Crescent Beach Park. Both of them sustained major damage after Hurricane Ian. So for Bowditch Point, the design will provide us with plans to fix the major four buildings in the park, and also to fix the access to the beach, and also to fix the port dock here and the parking lot around the buildings. For Crescent Beach, we are going to provide, Johnson Engineering will provide us with design plans and permits to do design for the sheet structures, as we see here, three access points to the beach, and restroom trailers, and landscape, and drainage for the whole site. We expect that design and permits to be done in about 12 to 18 months. And after that, we'll go to Phase 2, which is construction. I would like also to mention that both parks have restroom trailers and showers. We have one restroom trailer and shower in Bowditch, and two showers and two restroom trailers in Crescent Beach, and both meet ADA. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
I, oh yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Sure. I do have questions on this, just like as a general public-type person who doesn't know much about construction, I would look at the bathrooms at Bowditch Point and say, it was solid floors, solid everything. Why aren't they usable today? Did the plumbing get destroyed somehow? Like, what happened there that you can't just start using them?
Plumbing and some internal major damage happened inside, and that's why we have to make sure it's fixed.
So what does the rehabilitation of that building look like? Are you gonna have to gut it again? Because it looks like it's all concrete block, it looks like it's steel, it looks like it's materials that were durable that survived it.
So most of the electric system and HVA system got saltwater, so that will need to be replaced. Some of the flooring are heavily damaged, and the walls inside, the inside walls, not the outside. So there's a lot of work needs to be done.
Okay, all right, thanks. I just figured I would ask that because I do get those questions a lot from the public who, you know, they walk by it, and they look at it, and they're like, well, this is the kind of stuff I would build something out of if it was gonna flood. And they, you know, they don't understand why the concrete's not usable and that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's correct. From outside, probably it looks okay, but there's a major damage inside.
Okay, okay.
My question, yeah, timeline. I know this is obviously a need. We have a lot of new people coming back this season again, and the beach is looking forward to getting this done. What was the timeline for getting this done, in any way you can expedite it?
So the design and permitting will take between 12 and 18 months. We're trying to make it at the lower 12 months. And then we go for bid out to hire a contractor, maybe another five months, and then 12 months for construction, or maybe less. So overall, it'll be about two years.
Anyway, yeah, I'm just.
But the two parts are working.
Like Commissioner Hammer was saying, as a general public, you know, you can, does it really take a year to design? I mean, is there a way we expedite that a little bit on our end as far as their vendors were using for that?
We will look into that with Johnson Engineering if we can have condensed schedule for the design and permitting.
And I really have any other question, I'm gonna yield to the retiring district commissioner who's spent a lot of time down there the last few years. And thank you, Ray, for being so engaged and involved. So I know you've been down there a lot to see this project. So I know you were looking forward to get that done along with the pier and everything else, so.
Yeah, I think part of the process is that we had a couple of big setbacks. You know, we move ahead, we get another storm. We move ahead again, we get another storm. And obviously, that, the immediate need is recovery. And so everything takes too long, you know, and stuff like this. But I think pending the setbacks we had, I think we're okay. If we can expedite it all, I'm sure we will.
Yeah, yeah. And knowing that process takes time, that's why we have a portable trailer, restroom trailer, and showers. So that two parts will be used while we are doing the permanent design and construction.
Could I ask another question?
Absolutely.
So, so like, the design itself is gonna be $2.5 million bucks?
For both.
And then, for both, okay. And then is it gonna be like $25 million to do the actual repairs?
I'm not sure about the construction cost.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to put the construction design out for bid in order to find out what that cost would be. But we can ask our designer, when they are on board, to provide us with a cost estimate.
It just feels like, again, it just, it doesn't make sense. I'm not a construction person, I guess, but it doesn't make sense to me. I would think if it was a homeowner's building, you know, or even like a private company's building, they would have just ripped the wiring out, replaced what was broken, and gotten back in business. I mean, you look at many resorts have done that, actually multiple times, after being flooded multiple times. You know, they've shoveled the pool out at Margaritaville how many times already and gotten it working? I just, it seems interesting to me that it's $2.5 million just to design how to repair a facility that, I mean, I don't know, it looks like it was a pretty hard facility.
Let me just give you a little perspective. The latest home that sold on Fort Myers Beach was $11.2 million. Think about that.
Yeah.
You know, it set a record, you know. So only to say that the cost of design, the cost of construction, I think we've got some old numbers in our head. We don't know what the new numbers are going forward. And so we need some latitude in it. You know, I can find the final numbers, but once we understand what has to happen. I can tell you, those buildings took a beating, you know, and there wasn't much left. Just pull wires and replace wires.
So I just want to make clear, this is for design and permitting. So there's a lot of permitting fees, and there's multiple agencies that we will have to get permits from. So that's why it's a little bit high.
Any other questions?
I'll move the item.
Our motion on the floor.
Take it.
Second. Any public comment? Public comment, come on back up to the county commissioners. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed?
I do.
The motion carries three to one. Thank you. That concludes all our items. Any walk-ons and carryovers? Say none, Commissioner items. Commissioner Hammer.
I have no items, Mr. Chairman, but I do need to leave in about 10 minutes. I am on the canvassing board today, and we convene at noon for certifying the vote and everything like that. So fun times, we'll be here all night.
Game day.
Thank you. I know I don't have to say, Commissioner Hammer, thank you for doing that today and serving our country and serving the county, so you do it very well. Thank you for being there and for that. And again, Ray, you just got to like to make the last motion on our agenda today. Congratulations. Thank you. It's been an honor to work with you. I know we got a chance to talk earlier, we had our videos and things, there wasn't a TRI in the room. And I just wanna say thank you, working with you the last five years, a man of your honor and your integrity, your passion. I don't remember, I've been saying for 12 years now, I've worked with some of the best people in the world, but you came into this job and you.
I got drafted, it took me well to catch up.
Yeah. But people don't realize, I don't think a lot of people realize how passionate you were to go out and do the right thing, and you have no agenda, and I really appreciate your service to the community. You've been a blessing for Lee County. I know Larry's looking down today, and he's honored that you took this seat. So thank you for everything.
It's been my pleasure, my honor. Got a commissioner item. Okay, Commissioner, I have one commissioner item.
Three minutes. Do you only get three minutes?
I'm on the clock.
To speak up too.
All right, just to prove it, go forward. You know, prior to hurricanes, certainly the last two, the city of Benetton Springs was scheduled to commence work on November 1st of '24 for beach replenishment, re-nourishment. The storm surge associated with both of those caused extensive shoreline erosion on the southern portion of Benita. And tell me, you know, I can tell you many times, you couldn't even get through there. The additional loss of usable beachfront will require approximately 3.5 times the volume of sand, most of which was in the road. We added to the project an additional cost of $5 million. And discussions with the county, the city of Benetton Springs has asked the city, asked the city to loan the county $5 million to ensure the completion of the project. Therefore, I'm requesting the board give a direction, the county managers, to work with the city of Benetton Springs to develop an agreement for a short-term loan of $5 million to work in detail, timeline for a payback within the next three years or so.
Second.
A motion, a second on the floor. I'll open it to public comment. Any public comment? Say none, not close, public comment. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed?
Thank you all.
Motion carries now.
Much appreciated.
I do have one item, and perhaps maybe, Dave, I'm not gonna put you on the spot. There's a lot of confusion on debris and debris that we pick up. And there seems to be a path we went during Ian, and we had the greatest flexibility. We seem to have deviated a little bit from that. The citizenry don't understand. And certainly, I know in my district, I'm getting a lot of pushback on why we can't pick up commercial debris. I have two parts to the ask, if I will. One, trying to get a feel for you explaining it at another time. But moreover, if there's any way to put the back phenomenal expense to that item, so we just understand what we're dealing with. I'm just curious what we are. Community is really hurting right now. It's disappointing that there's different levels of reimbursement and things we're allowed to do with debris. But we probably got people with an expectation.
to do with debris, but we probably got people with an expectation in picking up, and even they put out the curb, basically. And when we pull back on that, people don't understand what's transpired. So, maybe there's subsequent meeting, we could talk about that. I don't wanna put you on the spot.
If you don't mind, I think Amanda and I could answer a few of your questions to start off with. I'll start off by just saying that, obviously, this is a different storm with a different set of rules. You know, the state picked up a number of missions during Ian that they are not picking up at this time. So, there is obviously different components associated with debris pickup, and that was a big key piece during Ian. With that being said, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Chris or Amanda. Who would you like to speak? Chris?
Amanda.
Amanda. So, well, I'll turn it over to Amanda to give you a more detailed description of what we're doing and the next step and the next step and the process itself. So Amanda?
Good morning, Commissioners. For commercial debris, we're assessing all of the locations that FEMA would classify as commercial. That includes multifamily condos, apartments, which is typically what causes the confusion with residents when we tell them they're considered commercial. We're doing an assessment of those locations, and then we are comparing it to FEMA guidance that has been issued regarding commercial debris, and we are looking at what our options are on getting in and collecting those. But what is really important for these residential locations that are considered commercial is that they have the appropriate right of entry and hold harmless agreements on file with the county, so that way when we can collect, assuming FEMA issues a waiver, and we have been trying to work with the state and FEMA on this, that we have the appropriate paperwork on file, so that way we can get in there and start collecting.
I appreciate that, to say the least, and, you know, along those lines, I know that we ran into an awful lot of expenses and continue to look for FEMA for reimbursement. I certainly had some conversations with the incoming president, Senator Martin, Senator Pascadoma, I was even talking to Commissioner Agriculture Simpson about some of the storms, and we had a 10-year loan that we received from the state, and were able to use that. Well, two years have gone by, and now, more than ever, it looks like FEMA is gonna be even slower to reimburse. So, maybe one of the asks we think about is asking the legislator to extend that two more years, to give us a full 10 years since we just dealt with some of these storms. It's something we're gonna need to do when we go up there and ask, and since it's not a new appropriation, just an extension of time, it would allow us the opportunity to catch those, some of these difficult items we're gonna go through. Thank you. Those are my comments, if you will. Now we'll go on to commission, committee appointments. Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one reappointment of Andrew Sond to the Conservation Land Acquisition Stewardship Committee.
Second.
And, oh, thank you. And a new appointment of Brian J. Massey from the Southwest Florida Healthcare Coalition to the Disaster Advisory Council.
Second that as well.
Thank you.
Motion, a second. Any public comment? See none, unclose public comment. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Penney, go.
I have a new appointment of Chelsea O'Reilly to the Disaster Advisory Council, a new appointment of Diana Tinkus to the Disaster Advisory Council, and a reappointment of Roland Kotkamp of Wussy Creek Estates.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any public comment? See none, unclose public comment. Come back here, anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Sandelli?
None.
I have three reappointments. One, two to the bike pedestrian, Eric Spivey and Jane Brewster to the bike pedestrian, and then to the Disaster Advisory Committee, Jeff Carley.
Second.
Thank you. Motion, a second. Any public comment? See none, unclose public comment. Come back here, anyone opposed? No. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. County manager item. Commissioner Hammond, appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple items before we get started. I would like to say, on behalf of the entire senior team, Commissioner Sandelli, we really appreciate the time we spent with you. You have brought a different perspective to the board, and it has been, your compassion for the community has been second to none, so it was, it was a great pleasure to serve with you, and we look forward to continuing to talk to you afterwards, and we hope, we hope you'll come visit us for lunch, so thank you, as always, for everything you've done.
It's my pleasure.
The first item, I would like to discuss the letter to FDM, and I'd like to ask Mr. Sauger to present.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, the letter attached to the agenda thanks the state for their great partnership in all hurricane recovery efforts. It does implore FDM in particular to prioritize or do anything they can to expedite the home elevation application that we have pending with the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So, we're two years past Ian. I know your offices, in the wake of the most recent two storms, have been inundated with inquiries about, am I going to receive this home elevation assistance? And staff gets those same inquiries. You know, people are really in need, and so we just want to make sure FDM is doing everything they can to expedite, which I'm sure they are. But then we also further implore them to prioritize home elevations in any disaster recovery funding that moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next item is a joint meeting with Charlotte County. We have a request from Charlotte County to have a joint meeting specific to a number of issues. The first one being Vincent Avenue. With that specific road, that is a private road. It falls between Charlotte County and Lee County. Charlotte County does have mandatory MSTUs and MSBUs where we do not. They wanna have a discussion about how to move forward with potential future maintenance of that road. Again, our side, that is a private road, so you guys have a specific set of policies that you've moved forward with that in the future. So that is one thing they would like to talk about. The second thing is, they would like to talk about Boca Grand. As you know, Boca Grand is split between the county and, Lee County and Charlotte. We worked very well with their county manager, Hector Flores, and he, we have a great relationship. We were able to handle most of the issues associated with the storm, but I think they would like to have a broader discussion about Boca Grand and how we can help each other and maybe have something more concrete in the future as we move forward. And finally, at your last, oh, not your last workshop, but one of your workshops, we had a discussion about solid waste and the potential for a waste-to-energy facility in the north. Christine Brady had spoken right after that meeting with one of the assistant county managers from Charlotte County, and now they would like to have a discussion about potential waste-to-energy facility at the Charlotte County landfill. So, with that, I would, I would request the board give us direction to work with the county manager in Charlotte County, potentially have a joint meeting, and to select a site that would be feasible for both counties.
Okay with that? By consensus of nods and people saying we're all in favor of that, so you can move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I think we needed to vote on the letter. I think I jumped the gun, I'm sorry. I think we have a, need to vote on that FDM letter.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Motion, a second on the floor. Adam, going to FDM. Any public comment? See none, unclose public comment. Come back up, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And finally, I would just like to encourage everybody to continue to celebrate. Commissioner Sandelli, we have a reception right after this event today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Party all day.
County attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not an action item, but with the board's indulgence, Commissioners, about five and a half years ago, Commissioner Sandelli entered our lives here in county government, having been appointed by Governor, Governor DeSantis to fill the term of Commissioner Baker, who due to his untimely and tragic passing, none of us knew what to expect out of Commissioner Sandelli, who was not previously well-known in the circles of county government. Most of what we knew came from internet searches. What we found was a naval aviator who had served this country with honor. Navy, of course, because anybody can land a plane on the ground. Takes a special kind of person to land on a ship at sea at night. A man whose flying skills landed him in the Navy's Blue Angels, an honor and recognition that's bestowed upon only three naval aviators per year. But Governor DeSantis knew exactly what he was doing. Commissioner Sandelli learned the job of county commissioner with ease. His quiet style of leadership and consensus building taught us all how to move forward, even in stormy seas. Through stormy waters and calm seas, you've navigated with strength and honor. Thank you for your dedication, leadership, and friendship. Your commitment to our nation, state, and county has been and is unmatched. May you find peace and happiness in the next chapter of your life, and in true Navy tradition, fair winds in following seas, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close that item. We're gonna go to public participation by citizens. My first card is from Carol Vila. Carol, you here? Turn it to the clerk, please. Thank you.
And we broke this up to three speakers. Hopefully, they go one right after the other, just to be within our three minutes. Okay?
The best I can.
Say, okay. Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Carol Villa, and I'm here representing myself and the residents of Polte Development Corkscrew Estates, which was formerly owned by Youngquist and known as Corkscrew Ranch. We are here to be heard and put on record for what we consider egregious actions made on properties by the developer, and as they reconstruct the surface water drainage system in our community. Most of our emails to Lee County Community Development Service has gone unanswered, calls and requests for meetings have been denied, and multiple code enforcement complaints that were filed have been dismissed without investigation. But mostly, most importantly, we've received no assurance that the drainage system installed will be adequate for our community. We are asking for your help to bridge this gap and assist in obtaining answers and confirmation of not only a drainage system that matches the plan, but after six months of construction, one that will properly function. So let me provide a little bit of background. Polte sold us these approximate one-acre lots between '21 and '24, '20, '21, '24, with the understanding that the drainage system would be, would not be sewers, as we're most familiar with, but culverts and swales that would convey excess water out of the community or into ponds within 24 to 48 hours. Okay? When viewing the properties and choosing a lot, there was no evidence of existing drainage system. In other words, there was no swales or basins in those front yards. Even after purchase and closing of the property for which our contracts provided for complete and final grading and drainage, the swales were constructed, were rolling into the topography, and did not create any offensive landscape. They also seemed to manage the surface waters explained by the sales team. The community was approximately 90% sold on May 1st, 2024. Then on May 10th, 2024, the Polte HOA sent an email informing all residents that for the aesthetic and functionality of the drainage system, they needed to inspect and verify the swales, that they meet necessary specification. But what specifications? Whose specifications? Polte gave no reasons, and they just let engineering and earth tech onto our properties. Curious, why is the topography of our lots and neighborhood being changed after closing and without our consent? Because the homeowners were not receiving answers from Polte, and we started experiencing more and more flooding in our front yards and streets from this project, we started calling Lee County Enforcement and South Florida Water Management District. A subsequent inspection revealed that Polte did not construct the surface water drainage system per the Lee County Development Order, I have the number if you need it, and the South Florida Water Management Certified Plan and Permit, which we also have. In other words, Polte constructed and closed on our properties with the drainage system in a different state than allowed per the approved plan. So where was the oversight? So I'm done. Hopefully, the next person can. I can continue if you want, or I can go to the next person.
Well, you're only allowed three minutes as a person. I don't know what, who's supposed to go next, because I have one from Mary-
Somebody need Mary, and then somebody need Marcy.
I have one from Marcy. You said they have to, I don't know if there's a particular one.
Yeah, they can come right after.
Great, that'd be great. Mary Giadano.
Thank you. Further investigation on our part discovered that the approved development order being utilized for the development of Corkscrew Streets in 2022 was originally from 1989. The recent site plans were amended and approved in 2007. The South Florida Water Management Certified Plan and Permit was issued in 2007 and expired in 2012. This means that the land had laid dormant for approximately 15 years without any maintenance to the ponds, the overflow structures, the preserves, the roads, the drains, or the said drainage system. We have requested maintenance records, again, to no avail. In fact, this development plan was approved before Corkscrew Road has ever widened and before the current surrounding communities were even built. Plus, subsequent improvements to the lands were made, such as a 2016 modification to develop public utilities and the lot elevations of each home that increased 18 inches. How can a permit be left open for that long with no required maintenance, much less an expired permit? And with the land improvements and recent surrounding development, why has Lee County or South Florida Water Management mandate, have not mandated a second engineering study before residential homes were constructed on this site? After inspection by Lee County Code Enforcement, a violation, and that's part of the packet that we presented to you, was issued on 8/7/24, which is still open, for not maintaining drainage conveyance per the development order. Well, today's November 5th, and we have now reached six months of constant reconstruction of our swales and culverts. We've lived through so many reiterations of their plan. The swales have been dug deeper, they've been dug wider, they've filled in, graded with a pitch, and now finally, they're leveled completely flat, simply to retain water. It just doesn't make any sense to us. Polte's reply is that the swales were meant to hold water, not to convey it out of the development. Not only does this newly changed drainage system not work in our community, it doesn't even define the definition of what a drainage system is, which is supposed to actually collect water and, you know, transport it out. Lee County Community Development has deemed the past six months of construction as maintenance to the existing drainage system with no permit required to address changes that have occurred over time. This designation was determined via a drive-by inspection held during a torrential downpour this past August. This is a difference in opinion with the Lee County Stormwater Environmental Specialist, who indicated on several occasions that at a very minimum, a new, a limited order development should have been needed for the work that's currently being done on our properties. As an aside, we've recently been informed by the Community Development Manager making this determination, they are no longer with the Lee County Community Development Services Department. And in the folders that we've provided, there's just tons of pictures to show you guys, you know, what is exactly going on in our community, the flooding conditions, and the extensive construction that we're going through every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Smith?
As a continuation in the packet here, included in this maintenance designation that Polte gave us were approximately 30 homes that had their driveways dismantled and their culverts and piping replaced because they were not installed per code. How could these culverts pass inspection, and how did a certificate of occupancy be obtained with this many code violations? Lee County Code Enforcement created a complaint, CPL 2024-03232, for doing work on a residential culvert without a permit. It was linked to a violation that Community Development Services closed without furnishing proof of permits to us. The result of these culvert reinstalations is that the culverts now sit lower than the swales and the drains, therefore collecting and holding water in the pipes under our driveways, where they can not disperse into the soil or evaporate from the sun. Why have culverts if your system isn't conveying water? This is creating unhealthy and unsafe environment, as we have rotting sod and algae-filled culverts and mosquito infestations. Additionally, we would like it on record that during this construction, we had, we have had port, we have had porta-johns sitting in our water-filled swales, large equipment parked on our lake's edge, and at least three large hydraulic fluid leaks on our roads. We also want to make note of the significant damage done to our private roads by various large equipment from many Polte-directed vendors over time. Can we safely say that the 2007 drainage plan will meet the needs of today's sized homes? Or- homes or of recent surrounding development in our area? With a 2007 plan, will the 2007 plan perform even after the lack of any preserved wetland, preserved wetland or swell maintenance for the last 15 years? Or after the regrading of our lots by an additional 18 inches per code? We have asked all these questions, and they remain unanswered by Lee County. Polte has been working on our privately-owned lots, leaving things in disarray for the last six months, and has never once presented us with a plan. Our community would welcome your assistance in obtaining a meeting with Lee County Community Development Services, Polte, and Southwest Florida Water Management. We need your help. Thank you for your time.
Peggy Zacharitz. Peggy?
My name's Peggy Zacharitz, and I live on Plumosa. When I talk about "we," I'm talking about Park Road, Plumosa, and Kokis, just our community. I'm here again to speak on the flap gate to control flooding that DOT removed from our canal after Irma. We've never flooded, ever. We didn't flood for Irma. Just the end, but everybody did. We've now learned that no permits were pulled to alter a waterway flowing into the Estero Bay State Park Reserve that has been there since the 1970s. It's interesting because right now, homeowners are required to get permits for anything they do in their homes. I paid $390 to put in baseboards and a foot of drywall. We were told there would have to be a study to see if it would be beneficial or cost-effective to put the flap gate back as it was, to see if it would move more water. But we want to know, where is the study to see if it would be beneficial to remove it and not replace it as it was? An engineer with stormwater background is needed. Right now, the water is flowing back into the canal. It could never do this before. The flap prevented it. It would close and not let it come into. A flap was put on a culvert liner that DOT installed, and it has failed to stop the backflow of water into the canal. That means we're getting the bay water and Timon Canal water, where it always just flowed straight out into the Estero Preserve. There's a coconut stuck in it, and no one has come to remove it. The rocks that were put in the canal by DOT also has caused, caused obstruction. There were never those big rocks, and you can look on Google Earth and see what they did. We're asking what the county's plan is to help us to get our flood protection back, and we, so far, we see no answer. There's no plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Thomas. Mary Thomas here?
Good morning. I'm Mary Thomas. I talked to you guys last winter, I guess. It's hard to believe it's been almost a year since we've tried to make some changes at our Lee County Domestic Animal Services. I'm glad to say we've seen some good changes, and I thank you for that. Animal Services has implemented their Lee County certificates. That's their new voucher, voucher program that's entitling Lee County residents to free or very low-cost spay neuter for family cats. We're also hearing that Animal Services will be offering their mobile spay neuter clinic soon, and we're excited to see that in operation. While we're not looking a gift horse in the mouth, we had hoped that the Lee County certificates would include our feral population. Because they don't, it inspired a group of us residents to put together our own program. It's a TNVR program, and the residents needed it. You guys didn't help them, so the residents are helping the residents. Email after email from Lee County residents show, have shown us how much they spend in taking care of these cats at their own expense, so we're here to help them. The most sad and disappointing change, and this is really hard for me to even believe, is an increase in the number of cats and dogs that have been killed by LCDS this year. 28% of all cats and dogs brought into the county shelter have been killed, and that's up from 20, 26% last year, the same time. It makes me angry that, given the petitions, the phone calls, the emails, meetings with everybody from the shelter director, the county, or the county commissioners, county manager, and this is where we are. I'd like to place all the blame on you guys, the public officials. We're ignoring the public, but I'll also take the blame for allowing you us, allowing you guys to ignore us. I am really nervous. It's time for us to come together as a community, the county government and the residents, and put an end to this needless, senseless killing of thousands of adoptable animals. There are tools, programs, best practice recommendations, all available for their use to better the conditions at Animal Services, to better the treatment of the cats and dogs there, and increase the adoption rate so more animals leave those doors alive, not just 71%. This year, 1,800 cats and dogs have already been euthanized. It's time to quit the name-calling. It's time to quit the backbiting and everybody accusing everybody of retaliation. There are two sides of this problem, but I cannot believe that everybody does not have the best interests of the animals of Lee County at heart. So let's quit the nonsense. We'll all act like adults, work together on this problem that desperately needs to be fixed. I'd like to leave you all with a copy of this book that I recently read. It's called Redemption: The Myth of Pet Overpopulation and the No-Kill Revolution in America. I'm asking that you all take a day and read it. It's easy reading and learn from it. This is taken from the foreword. After reading Redemption, county commissioners in Indiana communities succeeded in taking no kill to a shelter that previously killed the majority of dogs and cats, often cruelly.
Time's up, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
You should have been here earlier. We had a beautiful dog here this morning. You could have come with you.
She's an awesome dog. She deserves a good home.
Too bad you didn't take him home with you. Thank you.
Gina and Jane.
My own.
Gina and Jane.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We understand you have a lot on your plate in Lee County due to the two back-to-back hurricanes, but our furry friends need our help also. The spay neuter voucher program for the sterilization of cats has begun. Lee County residents can now have their indoor or indoor-outdoor cats sterilized, microchipped, and vaccinated against rabies. In addition to that, we will be asking Lee County veterinarians to donate just one or two surgeries per month or so to help with the extraordinary need in our area. The voucher program, also known as the certificate program, is a step in the right direction in overcoming the extreme overpopulation of cats in Lee County. However, now that Animal Care Trust Fund reserves will be needed for the voucher program, perhaps the fundraiser for the trust fund should be considered in the near future. We want to remind you that we will continue to strive for the revision of Ordinance Number 14-22. It is in your hands. Please consider a revision to Ordinance 14-22 to address the overpopulation of dogs and cats. The only way we can get the pet overpopulation in check is to put controls in place on the backyard breeders, such as licenses, and implement, implement more aggressive spay neuter programs for both dogs and cats. The anticipated transformation of the mobile vaccine clinic trailer into a more comprehensive vehicle, vehicle will be a desperately needed additional spay and neuter and transport option. We are still pleading for a three-day hold for stray cats and also for an extension of the Tuesday evening hours for lost pet retrieval. Regarding the euthanasia of dogs and cats, the gold standard save rate for dogs and cats is 90%. As of the end of 2023, our national save rate for dogs and cats was 82.6%, a slight decrease when compared to 83.8% in 2022. The state of Florida's 2023 save rate for both dogs and cats is 83.5%. Lee County's 2023 save rate for dogs is 78.7%, but just 66% for cats. We were hoping for an improvement in those statistics this year. However, as of October, the save rate has actually decreased compared to last year, and that is not okay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Marsha Ellis for the record. I live at 17850 DeVeau Lane, ZIP Code 33913. And I am speaking with some concern for the recent $620 million sale at Youngquist, because I'm a neighbor to that property, also live nearby Corkscrew Estates. I'm speaking because I understand that during commercial transaction, that there are required Phase 1 environmental studies, and with the May 8th CERCLA guidance from the EPA regarding PIFAS and assigning liability, assuming that liability, looking at what's potentially there, I think that it's important that the Lee County work to protect the public interest, not just in terms of, of CERCLAs specifically, but in terms of the many impacts on such intensive use at this mine and the 2,000 acres, particularly related to hydrology. Let me point out that there are private wells that are tied into this. There's the public water supply. There's an ASR well. There's surface water that's pinned, and then influence not just on Corkscrew Estates, but also Gator Hole, which is a gopher, gopher tortoise preserve impacting that hydrology. There's an interface of salt water near here. The Floridian moves from south to north. There's ongoing noise, exceedances from the brick paver plant. There are conservation covenants in upholding those. There's the drinking water sludge contract and, and that business, wherever that's being taken, and the liability associated with that. Let me also say that there are some very good studies. There's the Southeast Lee County Hydrologic Study that was associated with the Dover Coal and the Mike Shi modeling that pointed out that 20% of the water exiting DeVeau Lane is going south through that mine towards Flint Penn, and we have ongoing road construction through here, including Corkscrew Estates, which was built far too close to the road, and that, that could have been prevented. We have the Dover Coal, which worked towards solutions in Southeast Lee County, and we also have the South Florida Water Management District's Lower West Coast Water Supply, which details some current existing conditions and all of the dynamic interchange that's taking place in this same area where we have these 2,000 acres of mine that just changed ownership. I have personally written to the Youngquist and requested that we work together to come up with a comprehensive plan of how we're going to manage water in this area. I respect and appreciate the generosity as a neighbor in working with them, and I am really urge Lee County to work to protect the public interest as we move through this transaction, and we write a new chapter to, in the, for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, no close public comment, and all adjourned our meeting. Thank you all.